Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 12th, 2019 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I now call the meeting to order. I would ask that you silence any electronic devices that make noise. If during the meeting an emergency should arise, please leave in an orderly manner. Make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, please make a left-hand turn out of the council chambers and a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators if there is an emergency. If you need assistance, please ask and it will be provided to you. And once again, do not use the elevators. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize our delegate Carl Anderton. Good evening, sir. Welcome. At this time, I'll call Elder Tyrone Cooper of New Dimensions Family Ministries and also the Salisbury Fire Department Volunteer and Chaplain.
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, first to say thank you. God, we ask your blessing upon this city council meeting tonight. Bless each and every person that came out to be here. Lord, continue to bless and prosper our city, our county, and our state. In his holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tyrone.
Thank you.
Please rise now and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, we have a proclamation. Good evening.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen. Let me first just take a second to acknowledge the four re-elected members of the council. Congratulations on your win.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you missed the last meeting, you know that we had some gifts for Mr. Ierton, who has served this city not only as councilman, but again, as mayor, and then councilman once more. And...
Tonight is payback. That's what he said.
Well, payback was, what, last week or a couple of weeks ago? But, you know, Jim, just once again, thank you for all you do and all you've given this community. Tonight, we're here to celebrate friends of ours who have also served this community in a critical way. And we are celebrating an organization that has been in service to our community for 150 years, which is incredible. And this is an organization and an entity and a part of our community that has been in service in, I think, a changing fashion, but a mission that has always remained steadfast to the children and all those who wish to learn within our community through whatever medium, as I found the other day with my kids in this institution. So, the folks that I'm talking about, of course, are Wycomico Public Library. And the library began as a subscription library in 1869, two years after the formation of our county in 1867. And by 1925, the library was recognized as a critical community service, so much so that the library became a free library in 1926. And the need for more space moved the library to High Street into its own building in 1934. And the very first bookmobile was purchased and began service in 1948. And services, patrons, and materials increased over the years, and the library once again moved to its present location on Division Street in 1963 with a two-year major renovation, which ultimately was completed in 1980 to give us the library as we see it today. The library has extended its county outreach to include new branches at the center at Salisbury, Pittsville branch, and the Reader Van, and its circulation has exceeded over half a million publications since 1995. In addition to access to a large physical collection of books and magazines, books on tape, CDs, music videos, and DVDs, which my daughter's checked out like 11 of last week, the library also offers free public access to community members, meeting space, provides computers, filtered access to the Internet at all of the library locations, also offers special programs, public meeting rooms, and most recently passport services at designated locations. And now, the Wycomico Public Library is hosting a 150th anniversary celebration to quote-unquote "celebrate the chapters" of its history on Thursday, November 21st, 2019, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the downtown branch of the public library. I imagine all are welcome. Good, good. So now, therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim November 21st, 2019, as Wycomico Public Library's Day in our city. In celebration of the Wycomico Public Library's 150th anniversary of pursuing its mission of serving the people of Wycomico County, supporting education, enriching lives, building community, and with gratitude from the many citizens of our community who have and continue to depend on the free services of our library at its multiple locations, thank you and congratulations. So, for those who... I'll start by saying, for those who don't know, Ashley Teagle, the current director and CEO and queen and chairwoman and...
Thank you so much.
...of the library, this is a woman who grew up in this community, and we were lucky enough that she found her way back to Salisbury to lead this great organization, especially at a time like this, to celebrate the 150th anniversary. So, Ashley, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I want to make sure, did we...
Do this again.
Okay. I wasn't really paying attention. Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
We thank you and congratulations. And I know you've got a presentation?
Yes, short and sleek. Well, everybody, if you hear me, if I come and dance over here?
Sure.
If you'll use that presenter, just hit the right...
So, I won't take up much of your time. Again, as Mayor Day said, my name is Ashley Teagle. I am a "from here" and I am a huge library lover. And this is an incredibly exciting time to come back home for our 150th anniversary. So, there it is, save the date. Again, that's Thursday, November 21st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We will be celebrating. We're going to have music, we're going to have food, we're going to have a cash bar, and a silent auction, thanks to all of our wonderful community partners. And along with the 150th anniversary, we are always looking to grow our support base. So, our friends are hosting their bi-annual book sale. It actually launches on Thursday, November 21st, from 5:00 to 7:00, and then continues on through the weekend, the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. And, Mayor Day, this is a brand-new thing. I'm very excited to share with this audience. We got a grant, so the library is now loaning Wi-Fi hotspots. And this is huge because we're not still connected throughout the county in its entirety. So, there are hotspots available at our downtown location as well as Pittsville. And so, the goal with these is to make sure that our kids have access to Internet to do homework at home. It is to provide access to the Internet so our job seekers aren't constrained by the hours of the library. And I am hopeful that we can get support from our community partners to keep this going beyond the grant period. But I think this is just another example of how the library supports the community and offers added-on services beyond the books that you would come to expect from us. And I'm looking forward to us expanding into other areas of service as well. But again, it's a brand-new program. So far, they have started circulating, and anybody that has a library card can come in, place a hold on these items, check them out at our branches, and get their work done. And looking beyond the 150th, because let's face it, we're headed to the end of 2019, I'm really hoping we can expand services and technology. Again, people rely on the library as an access point, so, you know, having conversations with our IT manager about upgrading our Wi-Fi access, building partnerships throughout the community. We've been in discussions with Salisbury University to loan library materials to college students. We've been in discussion with Dr. Hanlon about how can the library partner with the local schools and maybe keep those school media centers open on an extended schedule. Again, this is looking at the whole picture of the county and how can we make sure that we're successful and how the library can support that. Also, looking at serving our underserved and diverse populations, you will see the library be a key partner with the upcoming census. You will see us participate by way of making sure our staff are helping people access that census, messaging to the community how critical it is that we're all counted. We have a huge immigrant population here in Wycomico County, and we want to make sure that we don't lose out on critical federal funding. As a matter of fact, this Friday, we'll be meeting with one of the Complete Count co-chairs to look at potentially pursuing a grant opportunity to make sure that we are really making sure our community counts. Also, with increasing early childhood development, we still have our Reader Van program in place. We're looking at expanding opportunities, speaking of partnership with the city, we're hoping to offer programs off-site at the Newton Community Center when that launches. And I think all of that, again, is critical, starting from our littlest residents on up and making sure that they have access to educational resources. And also, making sure libraries are the hub of the community. It's very important that communities have a neutral place. And so, I would invite city council members to take advantage of our free meeting room space to meet with your constituents. I would invite community members that are looking to problem-solve and build a better community to think of the library as a space to utilize to make that happen. I just think this is such an important time for libraries to be active in the community. I'm hoping that you will see us more, just doing everything from, you know, participating in the Pride March to the Wycomico County Fair, wherever we can get that information out to our community, that you have a library and a resource that can help make the community better. And that is all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I could just add, the comment that you made, Ashley, about the immigration in our community, I participated in an event with several other city and county leaders from around the state the other day and learned that we have one of the top four highest rate of non-U.S. immigration into our city in the state of Maryland, as far as jurisdictions go. And looking at a map of the state, it's really Baltimore, Washington, and Salisbury in terms of, you know, meaning the Maryland suburbs of Washington, Baltimore, and Salisbury in terms of where non-U.S. immigration population gains are going. So, we are clearly benefiting from that. That's where a lot of our growth is coming from. More than 75% of the population added to the city's population in the last nine years was non-U.S.-born immigration. So, just want to reinforce that and point out how important I think that is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have the October 7th special meeting minutes and work session minutes, October 14th council meeting minutes, October 21st work session minutes, and October 28th council meeting minutes. Resolution number 2983 approving the appointment of Meredith Stymas to the revolving loan advisory committee for term ending November 2023. And we're requesting approval for the manufacturing exemptions from the following companies: Base Steel Inc., Delmar Brewing Company, LLC, DeCarlo Precision Instrument, Inc., Jubilant Cadesta Pharmaceuticals, Inc., K&amp;L Microwave, Inc., Mason Dixon Machining, Inc., Pepsi Bottling Ventures, LLC, and Purdue Foods, LLC. And that's it.
Seven. Any questions or comments? I have one comment. It's great to see there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight companies that are investing, again, in their businesses in our city, which is a great sign because for quite a while there, we weren't seeing many of those. So, that's very good. And is Meredith with us? Meredith's not here. We thank her for her service. All right. If there's no other comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Ierton, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Hello. First item this evening is the award of bid for invitation to bid number A-20-101. That's the citywide pavement surface treatment. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids for all labor, materials, and equipment necessary to place pavement surface applications on city streets in right-of-way. This award will be a requirements contract. While the city has attempted to identify the estimated amounts of each bid item to cover its requirements, the quantity of work ordered may be different than that submitted for bidding. No minimum purchase was implied or guaranteed. Therefore, the city reserves the right to decrease or increase the quantities acknowledged in the solicitation document, and said modifications don't constitute a change order. Additionally, the solicitation included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew all or portions of the contract with the same terms and conditions as the original contract for two one-year terms contingent upon sufficient budget appropriations and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The pricing of future renewals may be adjusted due to fluctuations in liquid asphalt pricing when the index price increases or decreases more than 5% of the prevailing base index price per the Maryland Asphalt Association. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. Two vendors submitted bids by the due date and time of October 1st, 2019, at 2:30 p.m. The first was Slurry Pavers Incorporated for a total bid price of $366,750. The second vendor was American Paving Fabrics Incorporated for a total bid price of $391,625. All vendors were deemed responsive and responsible, and the Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award contract ITB A-20-101 to Slurry Pavers Incorporated with subsequent annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement. Purchase orders for specific tasks will be issued as needed from available funding in the street maintenance account noted in your packet.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. Oh, no, we have one more.
Two more.
Two more.
Two more.
Two more?
Two more. The next item is an award of bid for RFP Request for Proposal A-20-103, Fire Apparatus Maintenance and Repair Services. The Department of Procurement issued a request for proposal for the annual inspections, maintenance, repairs, and testing for the Salisbury Fire Department fleet of fire apparatus and ambulances. The contract period was specified as one year, with the option to extend the contract for up to three additional one-year terms contingent upon sufficient budget appropriation and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The city followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, notifying the city's bidder list by posting the solicitation on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. One vendor, Atlantic Emergency Solutions, submitted a bid by the due date and time of September 26th, 2019, at 2:30 p.m. The vendor was deemed responsive and responsible, and the proposal was evaluated according to the criteria established in the original solicitation to achieve a final evaluation score of 94.67. The pricing submitted by Atlantic Emergency Solutions included a total yearly cost of $32,494 for annual DOT inspections, pump tests, and bumper-to-bumper maintenance, as well as labor and parts rates for maintenance and repairs not covered in the bumper-to-bumper maintenance. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award contract RFP A-20-103 to Atlantic Emergency Solutions with subsequent annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement. A blanket purchase order for DOT inspections, annual pump tests, and annual bumper-to-bumper maintenance will be processed. Then individual purchase orders for specific tasks will be issued as needed for other maintenance and repairs. Funding for this award is available in the accounts noted in the departmental memo.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Okay, one more. This is the award of bid for invitation to bid ITB number A-20-103, Janitorial Services. We issued an invitation to bid for janitorial services for five city facilities: the Salisbury Zoo, the Water and Sewer Building, the City Yard, the wastewater treatment plant, and the Salisbury Marina. Each location requires different cleaning requirements and frequencies which were defined in the bid document. Additionally, the solicitation included a contract extension clause, which provides the city to renew all or portions of the contract with the same terms and conditions as the original contract for three one-year terms contingent upon sufficient budget appropriations and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. A total of five vendors submitted bids by the due date and time of October 9th, 2019, at 2:30 p.m. You'll see the five vendors noted in your packet, and I did list their per-week bid price. They ranged anywhere from $1,015.75 per week up to $5,050 per week. In addition to the weekly cleaning rate, each vendor provided a per-currents rate for additional calling cleaning of Ben's Red Swings and the zoo public restrooms. All vendors were deemed responsive and responsible, and the Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award contract ITB A-20-103 to Simply Clean with subsequent annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement. The annual expense for weekly cleaning of all areas will be $52,819, and blanket purchase orders will be issued on an annual basis by department.
$5,000 a week.
That's a lot of cleaning.
Well, that's a big difference between...
It's huge.
So...
Cleaning to perfection.
So, I guess the question is, is some of the locations, such as the zoo, Ben's Red Swings, may need service daily?
Yes.
So, is this a daily service provided, or is this...
It's different by location. And so, we specified in the bid document, some places may need it daily, some may only need trash done daily, some may need their bathrooms done once a week, or so on and so forth. So, we did specify that by location.
Okay. Yeah, I just, it's a...
Yeah.
A wide gap there between the two high-end ones and the... So, I'm just hoping...
They got, everybody got all the same information. And you'll note that there are sort, there's two are down here, one you have right here, and then you have two kind of up here.
Yeah.
As far as pricing, so, I mean, that happens. That's why we do what we do.
And there's probably the base rate anyway.
Are they, is that a national chain, or is that a local company?
Here, hold on, I have it.
Sounds local.
Sootland, Maryland?
Who?
It says S-U-I-T.
I hope we didn't get that wrong.
Sootland, Maryland.
Sootland, Maryland.
Right outside DC.
Okay.
They would not qualify for our local...
For transportation, for...
State and for gas.
So, but some locations, I'll say across the bridge sometime, have satellite locations here and then hire employees here. We've seen that, too. So, it doesn't necessarily mean that they would send employees from across the... But I don't know.
Contractual, probably is a factor.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Comments? All right, hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2967.
So move.
Second.
Second.
We'll give this one to Ms. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Ierton, since we did it the other way.
Oh, God, that was funny.
Good evening, Mr. Nichols. How are you?
Good evening, everyone. I'm doing well tonight. Thank you. Resolution number 2967, a resolution of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the southerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Johnson Road, Dirk Widdison Property Annexation, beginning from the same at the point being south from a corner of the existing corporate limit of the City of Salisbury, and also being on the westerly line of and near the north-westerly corner of the lands of Dirk Widdison located at 927 Johnson Road, continuing around the perimeter of said land to the point of beginning. Whereas the City of Salisbury has received a petition to annex dated January 9th, 2019, attached hereto as Exhibit 1, signed by at least 25% of the persons who are resident registered voters and of the persons who are owners of at least 25% of the assessed valuation of the real property in the area sought to be annexed, binding upon the southerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Johnson Road-Dirk Widdison Property Annexation, beginning for the same point, excuse me, for the same at the point on the corporate limit, said point being south from a corner of the existing corporate limit of the City of Salisbury and also being on the westerly line and of near the north-westerly corner of the lands of Dirk Widdison located at 927 Johnson Road, continuing around the perimeter of said land to the point of beginning. Whereas the City of Salisbury has cause to be made a certification of the signatures on said petition for annexation and has verified that the persons signing the petition represent at least 25% of the persons who are eligible voters and property owners earning 25% of the assessed valuation of real property in the area to be annexed and all as of March 5th, 2019, and as will more particularly appear by the certification of Leslie C. Sherrill, survey of the City of Salisbury, attached hereto as Exhibit 2. And whereas it appears that the petition dated January 9th, 2019, meets all of the requirements of the law, and whereas the public hearing is scheduled for December 9th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m., now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Salisbury that it is hereby proposed and recommended that the boundaries of the City of Salisbury be changed to annex and include within said city all that parcel of the land together with the persons residing at their end of their property contiguous to and binding upon the southerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury, beginning for the same at the point on the corporate limit, said point being south from the corner of the existing corporate limit of the City of Salisbury and also being on the westerly line of and near the north-westerly corner of the lands of Dirk Widdison located at 927 Johnson Road, continuing around the perimeter of the said land to the point beginning and being described more particularly on Exhibit A, attached hereto and made part hereof. And be it further resolved by the City of Salisbury that the annexation of said area be made, subject to the terms, condition, and agreements in Exhibits A through C, attached hereto and made part hereof. And be it further resolved by the City of Salisbury that the zoning map of the City of Salisbury shall be amended to include the newly annexed property in the R-8A residential zoning district. Said property is presently classified as R-20 residential district under the zoning laws of Wycomico County. And be it further resolved by the City of Salisbury that the council hold... City of Salisbury that the council hold a public hearing on the annexation hereby proposed on December 9th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at the City Council Office Building, and the city administrator shall cause a public notice of time and place of said hearing to be published not fewer than two times at not less than weekly intervals in at least one newspaper of general circulation in the City of Salisbury, which said notice shall specify a time and place at which the Council of the City of Salisbury will hold a public hearing on the resolution, which date shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of publication specified above. And be it further resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury that the resolution shall take effect upon the expiration of 45 days following its final passage, subject however to the right of the referendum as contained in the local government articles in the Maryland Code.
Questions or comments?
Is that why Julia's not here tonight?
Yes.
It's just these, man. She...
So, she didn't have to read it.
Every time. No, it's on Tuesday night. She teaches at the university.
Yes.
So she says.
Hearing no questions, or I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number 2967, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2968.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtin.
Resolution number 2968, a resolution of the City of Salisbury to adopt an annexation plan for a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the southerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Johnson Road-Dirk Whittson Annexation, beginning for the same at a point being south from a corner of the existing corporate limit of the City of Salisbury, and also being on the westerly line of and near the northwesterly corners of the land of Dirk Whittson located at 927 Johnson Road, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property to the point of beginning. Whereas the City of Salisbury is considering the annexation of a parcel of land contiguous to and binding upon the southerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Johnson Road-Dirk Whittson Annexation, beginning for the same at a point being south from a corner of the existing corporate limit of the City of Salisbury, and also being on the westerly line and of and near the northwesterly corner of the lands of Dirk Whittson located at 927 Johnson Road, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property to the point of beginning. And whereas the City of Salisbury is required to adopt the annexation plan for the proposed area of annexation pursuant to the local government article of Maryland intitulated code, and whereas a public hearing required pursuant to the law is scheduled for December 9th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m., now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury that an annexation plan for the Johnson Road-Dirk Whittson Annexation, as set forth in Exhibit A, attached hereto and made part hereof, is adopted for the area of land located and binding upon the southerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury, and also being on the westerly line up and near the northwesterly corner of the lands of Dirk Whittson located at 927 Johnson Road, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property to the point of beginning, and being more particularly described in Exhibit B, attached hereto and made part hereof, said parcel being contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limit of the City of Salisbury. And be it further resolved by the City of Salisbury that the council shall hold a public hearing on the annexation plan hereby proposed on December 9th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at the City-City Office Building, and the city administrator should cause a public notice of the time and place of said hearing to be published not fewer than two times at not less than weekly intervals in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Salisbury, which said notice shall specify a time and place at which the Council of the City of Salisbury will hold a public hearing on the resolution.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number 2968, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Kitzler. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2566 for the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtin.
Good evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. Ordinance number 2566 is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2020 Fire Department Budget Transfer Insurance Funds received by the City to the Fire Department Operating Budget from the General Fund for Revenue Received for Repairs to Ambulance A2, whereas the damage was done to ambulance A2 during the legitimate City of Salisbury Fire Department duties, and whereas the Fire Department paid for the repairs to A2 out of the 2020 Fire Department Operating Budget, whereas the city has received insurance proceeds from legit in the amount of $4,827.79 for repairs to ambulance A2, and whereas the insurance proceeds are to be used to replenish the Fire Department Operating Budget and to bring it back in line with the planned 2020 budget expense projections for the remainder of the fiscal year, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury and Maryland that the city's fiscal year 2020 budget be amended as follows with an increase in the General Fund Revenue Insurance Proceeds Account by $4,827.79, and an increase in the Fire Department Expense Vehicles Account by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2566 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2567 for the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson.
Yay.
Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. This is ordinance number 2567. It is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment for the 2020 Fire Department Budget to transfer funds from the city's general fund to the Fire Department Operating Budget to cover expenses for vehicle maintenance, whereas the city has declared a 1991 Ford Crown Victoria and a 2005 Chevrolet Suburban as surplus, and the vehicles have been sold at auction, and whereas both vehicles were operated by the Salisbury Fire Department, and whereas the city has received a total of $5,226.25 from the proceeds generated from the auction sale and placed the funds in the city general fund, and whereas the Fire Department has use for the funds, received and requests that the funds of $5,226 be reallocated to the Fire Department Operating Budget for 2020, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2020 budget be and is hereby amended as follows: increase in the General Fund Revenue, Sale of Assets Proceeds Account by $5,226.25, and increase the Fire Department's Expense Vehicle Account by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2567 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2569 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Mr. Irtin.
I'd like to offer an amendment to ordinance number 2569. We need to amend the ordinance by striking FY 19 and inserting FY 20 on lines 35 and 38.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Boda, second by Ms. Jackson, to amend ordinance number 2569 by striking FY 19 and inserting FY 20 on lines 35 and 38. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment for ordinance number 2569, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. We will now vote on the amended, sorry.
You have to read it.
Mr. Tillman.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Ordinance 2569 is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the Grant Fund to appropriate funds from a Community Needs Grant from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore, Inc., awarded for the City of Salisbury Youth Civics Council, whereas the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore has a Community Needs Grant Fund, and whereas the purpose of the Community Needs Grant Fund is to provide support to a broad range of charitable programs, and whereas youth empowerment mobilization is identified as a critical component of the future of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the mission of the City of Salisbury Civics Council is to mobilize and empower the youth by our community by providing meaningful opportunities to engage in civic leadership and service, and whereas the CFEs has awarded a Community Needs Grant to the City of Salisbury, which provides funding in the amount of $3,512 for the city's, for the City of Salisbury's Youth Civics Council, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of the grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the Council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury that the city's grant fund budget be amended as follows: increase the FY 20 Community Needs Grant Account by $3,512, and increase the CFEs Community Needs Grant Expense Account by $3,512.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the amended ordinance 2569, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Mrs. Nichols, do we have any requests for public comments?
No, sir.
Is our delegate still here?
He had to go.
He had to leave. Okay. Anything from the council?
I would like to say it's been a pleasure working with Mr. Irtin over the past four years, and we've been in this together for about 10 years, on and off, and appreciate your service to our city, appreciate your friendship, and everything you've offered the city over the course of your service over your life. So, thank you, sir.
If we were at Walmart, I'd stick my tongue out, hey?
Can I give you a hug?
I know. I do not know how to express my gratitude to the three of you, and then the fourth who have served over the last couple of years, Mr. Rudisell and Ms. Mitchell. I am trying my best for next week to get about three minutes' worth of thank yous into about 750,000 people that I have to thank, but I promise I will do that, that from the bottom of my heart, serving with all of you, and you, you, Mr. Tillman, and of course, Kim, has been the honor of a lifetime.
I said my piece. I can't say it again. I won't, because then he'll be mad at me.
Square, man.
Since there is no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.